Let's pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Susie on the right pole call please.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
I am also here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Consent agenda for tonight, motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes?
I have one question on the checks that were recently issued. I saw one to our attorney for $65,000 for the bonds. I just am curious what that is.
That's the bond council fee. So we have to retain bond council to seek financing, just as we also have to seek financial advisor that's required for all municipal bonds. And we use the bond proceeds to pay that, so it doesn't come out of our funds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the invoices? All right, motion and a second to approve is presented. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Public comment.
Beat you to it. Bruce Matthews, 326 Riverside. Just a quick comment. Last Friday, the folks at Milestone Wealth down here on Main Street sponsored a community cleanup day for, primarily, I think, for customers that they work with. And we had two groups. One group went down and cleaned up the north country trail south of town, and the other group went up to the trailhead, the Boy Scout cabin, to clean up garlic mustard. And I just really need to call out the Little Light Power folks. They had a whole crew up there, worked with us for a couple hours in the morning pulling garlic mustard, and, you know, it was just above and beyond. And I think it's important to recognize that and say, "Thank you."
Thanks, Bruce. Anybody else? Nothing, neither one here.
I'm on you.
What about, all right, it's a waste.
Don't ask questions.
All right, old business number eight.
I'm sorry, I handle it on my left of the agenda.
We, okay, we already approved it, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed that.
I'm sorry, what do we?
I'd like to talk about Riverside Drive pedestrian safety.
I actually just talked about that. Anybody have any objections to adding Riverside Drive under item D new business?
No objections.
Well, we discussed it before, because we put it under B for other under...
For old business?
Since we've had several conversations.
Sure, let's do that.
I'm going to be...
Yep. All right, we'll handle that here in a minute. Susie, can you note that?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, budget approval for 2425. We will open the public hearing at 7:03. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Dennis. You can do whatever you want.
Dennis Camp, 1708 Drive. You know, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into creating this budget. You know, it's a lot of work. And we've made some comments, I think, at the last work session on the budget also. I guess what I'd like to just say here is I'd like this, the city, to continue working on finding ways to keep the water rates down and to keep, you know, finding ways to keep the bonds, you know, the money we are borrowing down, because this is, you know, water and sewer are getting expensive here compared to a lot of areas in Kent County. So I just want to make sure that we continue looking for that, you know, going forward here. I know, I know Mike's done a lot of work and I appreciate that, and, you know, it's just, it's important.
Yep, we're going to keep going.
All right.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
I modified the budget in the budget resolutions with the changes that were the DDA approved, where the DDA is approving approximately $121,000 to assist with the bond payments for the water and sewer for Monroe and Washington. The majority of that $121,000 is going to the sewer fund. As a result of that, we were able to reduce, between that and actually a reduced interest rate on the loan for Washington, we were able to reduce the water rate to 9.16% from 9.66%, so a half percent. We were able to reduce sewer rate from 9.66% increase to 6.5%. And the trend right now, if we, if there's no other grant funding, is 9.16% over the next six years and 6.5% on the sewer for the next six years, which is less than what we've raised on sewer the last two years. So that, I did make the budget modification of the budget to reflect that. That was the only change I made since the budget session. So the budget, the budget is on the, the recommended budget's on the website that I sent you to reflect that.
Credit to Tyler Camp too for the idea, to even look at it. All right, any other public comment on the budget? Council comments on the budget? Or G?
No, you can call me back.
Come on.
I do have a couple. As we continue to look at the upcoming budget, I know Mike and his team will do everything they can do to look at it and if there's a way to move monies around or reduce things or whatever we have to do. And of course, we'll have some other comments as we look moving forward to some of those items on the budget for a little bit deeper discussion. So what we're looking forward, hopefully, we can make some progress on that.
And the plan is to keep those updates at these meetings, too.
Correct, exactly. That's my goal, is to ask periodically how we do.
Well, it's my last meeting. I asked Mike to keep this updated at least once a month.
So, so, so with that, I do want to add a few other things about the budget itself.
Mr. Barkis?
I've got a few, sorry. First of all, the salary increases, and Mike Burns and I talked, the three and a half percent off cost of work salary increases are quite modest for our hardworking staff. Actually, not even inflation, so I appreciate that. I do, I did, I did question the $17,000 door at the wastewater plant, and I talked with Brian. He explained that that was a typo. It's actually all the doors to, that are existing, and they're rotted away, many double doors, and so that, that $17,000, if anyone caught it, it's a typo, and that's actually quite a good deal to replace all those doors. Brian, any other thoughts there?
No.
I'm not on board with our leaseholds, and Mike Burns and I have talked about that also. And I, I know this is a DDA call, and there's a lot to be discussed. I understand the desire for camping, and it would be a good thing for the area, but again, I'm, I'm not sure that it's from a business sense, if we're going to, if it's a moneymaker, a money loser. If we're going to have a campground, I think we should have a business plan and go all in. So again, I look forward to learning more about that this year as we go. I, I just, lastly, the airport shows $77,000 of revenue, $114,000 of expenditures. I believe that includes planned paving.
At least, I guess.
So if the pay, they're planning to pave the airport, so if that, if that isn't approved, then the airport is a balanced budget, balanced budget, which is good. But I just, I wanted to make sure of that. Other than that, good.
And a reminder that the airport is City Airport in name and liability only.
No tax, I'll just go to the airport.
No tax, I'll just go to the airport yourself. If there is a deficit or a surplus, we will be on the pro per.
Yep.
All right, we will close then the public hearing at 7:08. And I will look for a motion for resolution 1124 to approve the fiscal year budget.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support. Any other discussion?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, nothing to it. Chambers, let's go. Creekside Kingdom naming rights.
I thought we had B, item B.
Oh, I forgot about item B. Riverside Drive, Eric.
Yes, I, I just, I want to bring up the fact that the area around Seaborne and Easy Street have gotten very congested. People that are trying to bypass the lake go through there very quickly. It's a very busy area. I am just very fearful for pedestrian safety, people, families that are trying to cross the street. Many people don't use the crosswalk at Main Street, they're crossing by the restaurants. I'm really concerned about that. I really would ask that we consider a work session with the residents of Riverside Drive, if there is something that we could do in the near future. I know Mike has paving plans for, possibly it's at least a year off, maybe more than that. But before we do that, I'm just wondering if there's something we can do to cut down on the congestion in that area. And of course, we would have to talk with the neighbors, the Louies and Matthews and that. But there's some things that we could easily try as a test to figure out what we want to do permanently. So for instance, one idea would be to divide Riverside at Elm, so that everything north of Elm is one way to the south. Everything from Main Street is one way to the north. And then at Elm, you'd have to turn onto Main Street.
Are you talking about like putting barricades in right now?
Like, like putting in some sort of temporary barricade to try to divert flow, to stop with the, the through street, because I think this summer, especially after it's paved, it's, it's just going to be a...
Night.
A very...
I will say, living on, where did I look? Oh, Elm. Elm, having that bump out right there, because people would come and see the long line going east, and they would try to tear up that little side part of Lincoln Lake behind Richards Park, because it takes them back out to Hudson. Putting that bump out in there made an incredibly positive difference. So you can go down Elm, or you can go down Lincoln Lake, but as soon as you get to Elm, it's not a through street anymore.
Right.
And having something like that, that bumped around right to that little Y at the corner of Light and Power's building, you can come in there if you're going to park and go to the businesses, or if you work at Light and Power, it wouldn't affect any of the people south of that, the Light and Power drop box.
No.
But it would eliminate them getting a running start going up Riverside Drive.
I agree, I agree. I mean, it might even be a, we have those concrete barricades that we have, it might be as simple as just, if that was where the council wanted to go, it might be as simple as just putting those concrete barricades down until, you know, I'm looking at 2526 for this project.
Right.
You know, where, when we, when we do that project, we engineer something more permanent.
Right, but to Eric's argument, they would still be able to pull that Y around Light and Power and use Elm to get to Hudson, and they'd be able to use, what's the street? On the west side of your building?
Yeah, I would restrict it north of Elm.
Oh, Riverside.
Yeah, that part of Riverside to get back to Main, right?
Yeah, I would put the restriction north of Elm.
So you're only restricting the people that are trying to fly up Riverside Drive to get out of town.
Correct.
The businesses and access to our two main roads wouldn't be disturbed at all.
Right, and then you would have, like, the people that live between Elm and, was it Spring, I believe, you know, they would, normally it's one way out, but I mean, if those people came in off of Spring and ended up going south of it, I don't see what the issue would be.
Or even if they came off of Elm, they could still go one way or one way.
I don't know how you can do that. I don't know how you can do that, because if you're coming in, if you're restricting access to Riverside just north of Elm, I don't know how those cars could go.
No, what I'm saying is, go right to the corner of the line shack property and bump it out that way, right? So you're only, you can't go north on Riverside by Larkins anyways.
Right.
Oh.
But we do have...
But I'm talking about going north on Riverside.
That's Broadway.
Yeah.
That's Broadway.
I'm talking about, yeah, but if you're going north on Riverside, I would think that probably the most logical thing would be is to divert them at Elm.
Yes.
Yes.
North of Light and Power.
Right, but you still want those parking lots and the Light and Power employees to be able to use that part of the light in absence of Elm.
Yeah, that I'm saying, like, what I'm saying here. Yeah.
Because we do have...
You don't want to lose this parking spot.
We do have somebody's making deliveries over there to the restaurant, to the post office and to...
I'm thinking of restricting it right there.
Oh, no, not me, I'm going to boom, bump out.
So we have to make sure we don't restrict them, make them turn, because that stop sign...
Oh, so restrict it here.
Turn sign right there.
Right.
Gets white felt every time.
Yeah, bump out.
So they can get, so they can turn around. Okay, okay.
I would just do it here.
Right?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Because we still want them to be able to swing that.
Because the trucks will still be able to make this turn.
Yep.
I know you guys can't see it, but it's a really good idea.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you'd put it up on the screen.
We don't have that ability connection. We're not, we'd have to turn, it'll take 15 minutes to light that thing up.
Something to...
The residents? Well, that's why, a public hearing, yes, come on.
Well, no, I'm...
Come on.
I'm just saying, this is a good time to...
Have a public hearing.
You know, to get the community involved in what we're doing.
On like this surface, to have it.
I don't think, I think Eric's great idea, I just don't think right now is the time to try to figure it out.
No, I agree.
And I'm not asking until we figure it out, I'm asking for a work session, that the neighbors are invited.
Yes.
And if we just regularly try something so that no pedestrians get hit.
Well, when you do something permanent, you want to make sure it's the right thing so you have the people who want it.
Right, right.
Right, so the more things we try and fail at, eventually we'll get to the right thing.
Well, it's...
Could we do a, do we have enough time? Do we have enough time to send out a notice to those affected residents and businesses to do a 5:30 before our next council meeting?
Would it make, I mean, that might be a little short notice, I mean, we can do it, or maybe it might be better the second meeting.
Yeah, let's just do it the second meeting. That way we know everybody's paying for it.
I would do it once, I mean, I guess, I would do it when school's out. The next couple of weeks are pretty busy.
Which the second meeting in June, school would be out.
Let's do that, man. A 5:30?
I'd like to see what that bump out looks like, too. I mean, it's not going to stop the pedestrians, because you've got cars parked manually there, and it's tough.
Yeah.
You don't have a whole lot of...
No, but what I'm saying is, it'll stop...
I see a guy back out here, car, and this took off.
Sorry. You should depart. What I'm saying is, I'm not trying to stop the cars. Keeping people from using that block behind Eric and Marty's store at Easy Street as a running start is going to increase pedestrian safety on its own. And as the people find out that it's more of a headache than it's worth, you'll eliminate them altogether.
My only...
It's still a weirdly angled parking lot, so backing out is always going to be...
Yes, I agree with what I'm saying, yes.
They've always crashed there.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on, Bruce.
This is Bruce Matthews, 326 Riverside. They live on the corner of Riverside and Spring, so, you know, we're right at that spot where the acceleration is beginning to, you know, beginning to go. We've talked about this for quite some time, I've sent letters, have, you know, been, been part of advocating for some changes in, in this. And, and so all I want to say is, this is great. It's great that we're having this discussion, appreciate the dialogue, look forward to that. I don't need to, you know, recite a litany of the ills that are, that are going on there, you know what they are. But really look forward to having this discussion and moving forward with some action to address this issue.
Well, I think for the last couple months, we've been talking about Riverside, how we're going to control that, right, whether the stop signs. Rich made a comment about narrowing it up, right?
Right.
And doing all these different things, so it's, it's something we've been talking about quite a while, so...
I just have to park my trailer a few more times on that.
There you go, Eric. Should be calling a speed bump on Riverside.
What about spike strips and then a city tow truck, which would create us a new source of revenue?
True.
And a city tire shop.
On a more serious note, I do want to, you know, thank the city for putting a, I don't know what you call, speed monitor, whatever it might be, that's been there, I guess was over the weekend anyway.
Oh, the new trailer?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that's great, it's good to see.
Are you seeing, you'll see it again. Are you seeing positive results from that being there? The optics of it?
I can't, I can't say one way or the other. I'm, I'm further down the street than, than where the placement is, so I don't know.
When I was on G Drive, I still see a difference. I drive G Drive probably five times a day.
It's not changed right now.
Yeah.
But I think putting those right there, either by the funeral home or wherever, no, not the spike strips, it will eventually stop 80% of the cars going down Riverside.
Right.
And now if you have a problem speeding, it's probably somebody in the neighborhood doing it, right?
Apparently.
I've seen you, I've seen you leave my place with your trailer, you're flat on the fuel, buddy.
Don't start from Riverside Council.
All right, Ken McElhaw, 10 Riverside, again, I want to thank you for putting the trailer out there. I know we'd see the red and blue lights every once in a while. It was a great speed deterrent, so I know that, I think the percentage that you'd see speeding, I haven't got to go through all the packet yet, but I think the percentage you see speeding would have been reduced a lot, just because you could see that thing coming in the road and then it gets socialized kind of. So I don't know if there's any way around that, but thank you for, for doing that, and I'll take a look at it. I was just going to say something else. Now I guess that's the main thing, I'm sorry. But yeah, be happy to, I know some of the other neighbors too, be happy to brainstorm and do some working sessions or petitions or whatever we need to do.
I just think getting the residents up and down too, they're all sitting in a room and say, okay, this is the, what, the best way you could about it, and if it's feasible, then...
I'd say the other piece too is, once school gets out, I suspect, I don't remember from last year as well, but I suspect that it's going to reduce some, because when, when the school, or when the, the street right by us, you know, the schools get out and all that, you reduce that traffic.
Yeah.
So we'll see what that looks like. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
A couple barricades too, the air sign, 17, leaving a 5:30 extension.
That'll give us time to notify the residents. I'd like to see Elm and Spring, Riverside streets, that notified to, and then the downtown businesses, right? Maybe, I don't know that it would affect people on the post office side, but for sure Greg and Holland and Eric and Marty's block.
They'll probably get a little polish.
Yeah, and Cater. I've seen some, I'm on vacation.
All right, anything else for Riverside Drive?
No doubt.
Great idea. All right, Chambers. Now to turn. Creekside Kingdom naming rights. You got confidence.
And when were you at breakfast this morning?
Yeah, when were you at breakfast this morning?
I started at breakfast. Better, huh? Time of breakfast?
6:30.
You could have done that.
I was on my way to work, sorry. Um, yeah, so we had a large donation to protect Kingdom by a local business, and their request was to add their name to the playground, not, not the park itself, just the playground. So we agreed to it, but at this point, we need your guys' blessing, so.
So I had discussed with Teresa too, because I know she couldn't leave tonight, but they're very content that the donation is more than generous enough, and they hadn't discussed a term, but that equipment they're putting in has between a 30 and a 35-year life.
Yep.
So the caveat then would just be, if we rebuild it, the name doesn't transfer, right? So...
Yeah, or, or some period of time you want to allow the naming, or, I mean, we don't have a policy on naming rights as part of the issue. We don't have a policy. They're, they're looking to make $75,000 donation. My thought was that if you were to do this, maybe it's a 20-year period of the naming rights, if you were going to go with that, or 10-year, really, it's really the council's purview as to what they want to do, but I wouldn't want, want to even want it in perpetuity and, and maybe the dollar amount isn't enough for a 30-year commitment. We have, like I said, we have no policy whatsoever, but we've also, you know, we've never really challenged for it.
It's also their project though, not ours. So if they're content with the dollar amount, which it sounds like they're more than happy with it, you're not going to get a business to buy the naming rights that's been around longer or done more for the community than King Milling. And if it has a 30 to 35-year life, if you put a 20-year cap on it, then you got to go after naming rights and charge somebody for 10 years, and then you're going to tear it down anyway when you build it.
And my question is, in 20 years, if you have to rename and it's another, you know, same dollar amount or more, right, 20 years, what would that money be used for then? There's, you know, whether it's additions to the park, so our thought was, you know, to have the park rename opportunity to come again when that needs to be rebuilt, when we go through this process again, then we'll see if they're still interested in it, if they are, you know, they'll, they'll give us a dollar amount. If not, if somebody else is interested, it's, it's their opportunity then, so.
Yeah.
Whether that's 30 years, if, if, if there needs to be a date on it, I think 20's too short, so.
I think you'd struggle to find somebody to pay for naming rights when the project at the end of its useful life anyway.
Yeah.
And again, with no policy in place, we're swinging blind here, so I'm content to defer to the people who've done 95% of the work on this project.
We almost have to, because we haven't had, we haven't been part of the conversation they have. They went out and raised all the money to do this for our community, and if they're, they're the ones that are trying to look out for everything, just like, you know, back in the day when the thing was first built. So I don't have a problem with the full, full term that road re...
Till it's rebuilt again.
Yep, basically, yep.
Yeah.
So I have a question. It looks like you're just about halfway.
Yes.
What if, and I don't know what your conversations with others looks like, but what if another company comes in and says, "I'll give you 80," naming after our, then what?
There's other naming opportunities. I mean, naming the park's a big one.
Yeah.
But there's individual parts and pieces and areas of it. Currently, there's nobody on the table that, that we've gone to. We've gone to several other bigger businesses.
Yeah.
And we've received donations.
Okay.
But so far, King Milling has been the highest. The other one has donated roughly half of that, and then another large business, they've already donated for the year.
Okay.
So they're out. So the remaining donations are, are going to be smaller, $10,000, $20,000 ranging from different, different entities or, or grants.
Yeah, I just, I'm not so concerned about it, because I don't know what those conversations have been like. I just know from, from a fundraising standpoint, that can be great leverage to get somebody to close in on a, on a campaign goal, so.
Right, yeah.
Really just watch out for that, but I...
Do you envision it at all like what they did with the showboat? You had various levels of naming rights.
Admiral and captain and...
Yeah, so all the levels, we have, we have pickets, we have benches, we have parts and pieces of the playground. There's a, there's a hotots area, so there's like a train station again and all that, so, you know, if a company or, or family's interested, you know, and they can't quite get to $50,000, but they can do 20, let's say, or 30 then, you know, all the items in that area, we have, we have a dollar amount on every single item in there, so that may be what they get then, and then their name would be on display as you walk into there, so. So there's more opportunities, so.[1766.22] So there's more opportunities, so.
Any other questions for Cody? All right. I will make a motion that we accept the donation of seventy-five thousand from King Milling and rename the Creekside Kingdom Park, King Milling Creekside Kingdom, for the usable life provided.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Cody.
So in thirty years, you're going to be standing back.
No, he's going to be sitting right here.
Hopefully, I retire by then, I have way more time to.
To show up to breakfast?
Yeah. But so you guys know, when Cody and my oldest son Christopher Young, we helped build it originally, and we didn't, my wife and I didn't have the money then to name a board, but we were involved with the building of it. So as a father, I'm pretty proud of my son for getting involved and doing something he did as a child, and I am also happy to say that now I don't have them kids living at home, I can afford those boards, so.
And your grandkids won't get splinters anymore, so blame them.
Oh, just that.
Splinters, it's more like nails.
Nails. City-sponsored pet show. City sponsored box of pies.
That was a hundred and twenty-five dollar government hammer. That's what I, yeah, for hammer, yes.
Engraving extra, additional truck. All right. Fire Authority budget amendment.
Yep. The Fire Authority is asking each jurisdiction for an extra payment this year for operations. The expenses for this year were much higher than budgeted, and each jurisdiction was billed the difference owed based on the funding model formula. The fire department exceeded the budget for several reasons. First, the budgeted amount for paid-on-call response was significantly less than the current call volume. Called, our call volume from the fire department has gone up significantly over the last two years. Second, we had unforeseen truck repairs, which exceeded the budgeted amount. Third, there were additional legal costs relating to the matters of the former fire chief. And fourth, there was an increase in budgeted costs for the hiring of Chief Felzin, as his pay and benefits were running line with comparable communities. The additional cost to the city is twenty thousand, one hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents. We are obligated by our agreement to cover these costs based on the formula. I have included this in our budget projection, which was updated when I submitted the budget in April, and when we do our year-end amendments next month, these will be added. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the expense for the additional cost to the fire department in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents. Any to add, Mike?
No, I, the third reason there obviously cost us a ton of money. I mean, we saved a ton using SABO PR, Seth had a pretty good work, our Fire Authority attorney had a pretty good work in relationship with them too, but the truck, there's nothing you can do about. The only one that was, in my opinion, preventable and foreseeable would be the payroll budget. I think that was undershot by a significant amount to make the overall budget more palatable, and that anybody who was, it, it wasn't sustainable. Call volume, you can't nail a hundred percent, right, but you can pretty, get a pretty good metric of what the growth is going to be, right? So the first one, in my opinion, the budgeted payroll was a hundred and fifty million percent avoidable, but the other three, I don't, I mean, there's nothing you can do. A truck breaks, you gotta fix it, can't have a million and a half dollars worth of equipment sitting in garage, not much.
I got a question from Mike. So, long-term, the Fire Authority, we keep paying more and more and more and more and more. Eventually, it's going to get out of control to where we simply financially can't be part of it. At what point do we start to look at forming, we're doing a, I don't want to call it a tax, but.
Special assessment.
I can start that if you'd like.
I mean, I can start, and yeah, feel free. I know there's a, you know, it would obviously require some type of cooperation with the neighboring jurisdictions, otherwise, we would have to special assess ourselves for that cost. Ideally, the way we fund the fire department, the way I'm, the way I see it, between both jurisdictions, it's just unsustainable. When I came here, the fire, the cost of the fire department was, I think the budget was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That was in two thousand and sixteen. We're over three hundred thousand dollars now, just the city's contribution, but we've had growth, we've had significant growth in the area. We've professionalized the fire department, we've got a staffing level that is, is where it really needs to be. Really, in my, and I know the townships have gone out for millages and had them approved, and even they have underestimated their costs. I can, I can, you know, I can see the cost just keep going up and up and up, and ideally, what I'd ultimately like to do is, I'd ultimately, what I'd ultimately envision is, I'd love to see the Fire Authority become their own funding mechanism, where the money we're contributing towards the fire department, that money can go to police, because quite frankly, we need to double the size of the police force, from what I see. And if we, if we had the ability, if we had the ability to have them become self-funding, the money that we're contributing now could really go into the police department, and I think what they need, they need more officers, they need more officers, just like the fire department has greater needs. We're, we're, as far as I'm concerned, we're severely understaffed for our police and our fire. Well, we're not, we're not understaffed for our fire anymore, but we were.
I disagree. I think we're still understaffed for our fire.
Well, yeah, I think. There's. The first or second most called out, right?
We're up there.
So in the county, so it's not like.
All-wise.
Yeah. So I guess my next question would be is, when should we start having these conversations with the townships and try to start moving forward?
This is where I come in.
All right.
The answer is, we started them a year and a half ago.
Good.
They're hopefully in September, it was hung up a little bit because the facilitator we were going to use had some medical problems, but to bring in all three boards, invested community members, to explain to them how the Fire Authority is even funded right now. There's also, I lobbied for, when we were down in Lansing, a house bill that allows Fire Authorities to import their own formulas and become funding, self-funding, right? Because right now, if we self-funded through a millage, then that formula we use goes away. The formula is.
Your SEV.
Yep.
SEV.
Your whole value, population, calls. But you can get from the fire station to City Hall and back pretty quick, if you had a medical there. But if you have a medical out to Murray Lake, now you're talking about those resources being delayed getting back to where you need them. So that formula has value, especially to us, because we're lowest in call volume and in distance. So it's in, where it's being pushed at every single fire authority needing. The attorney's also looking in to different ways that we could look at the funding model if that house bill didn't pass, because that house bill's been on the floor now for the better part of thirty-six months, and until this most recent lobbying effort, it's been me, some people from Saline Township down by Ann Arbor, they have a Fire Authority and they're in the same problem they are, and then a couple of the more rural communities up north that needed a Fire Authority because they have twelve residents that want to be fired, and that they're spread out over.
So you're saying that thirty-six months has stalled on the floor there, Mike?
Stalled, I think is a generous word. It was ignored.
It's sitting in committee.
It was ignored.
My concern is what the chief gave us is the potential budget. I mean, there was a huge amount that they looked at, the increase just for us, and I mean, it was well over half a million dollars, wasn't it? Not just for us, but all, all three together.
All told, yes, but.
That's huge.
But it's also a service, a lot like the police. You gotta go when they call, right? So if they don't call, you've got a ton of money left at the end. If they keep calling, then you run out of money halfway, so.
And it's, I mean, when you really think about both police and fire, they're twenty-four seven operations.
Yes.
They don't ever end. I mean, reason why the police department budget's so high is because they're twenty-four seven operation, and same as the fire department. Fire department is a twenty-four seven, they're paid on call, but they're running calls all hours of the day.
Yeah.
It just, it, and when you have it, it, there's a cost. I mean, there, it, and especially when, you know, more so, probably, I mean, your public safety, your biggest cost, at least in your police department, your biggest cost, your personnel cost by far, and you're, in a fire department, you're, it's probably your second biggest cost is your personnel, your first cost is your equipment, because their equipment is just very costly.
Do you think by September, we could, we could look at having all these people meet? I mean, it's for May, and so we got somewhere a lot of people are gone, so.
The problem is, the people who could facilitate this meeting and bring us the information that we need are scarce. There's probably three or four of them in the state, because there's not a ton of Fire Authorities, and there's not a lot of, outside of real rural communities, there's not a ton of volunteer and paid-on-call. I mean, we have four, five full-time departments, twenty-four hours a day, in this, in the neighboring county, that run half the calls we do. Haters full-time, twenty-four hours a day. For what? Right, well, obviously, that, for what?
Yeah.
You know, and ultimately, having that full-time and having that newer standardized equipment lowers your insurance, lowers your, you know, it increases your value, so it's a service you have to provide, so.
Well, is there anything we as council can help do as far as to get this all moving?
Yeah, I'd love to get you guys involved in a lobbying effort, or at least know what I'm down there, you know, yelling about all the time, but outside of that, the problem is, we can do whatever we want, but we're only thirty-three percent of the authority, the governing board, right? And if the townships don't, I mean, they went out and got millages on their own already, where we could have been having this funding model discussion before they put their millages out, but it was a, you know, it was a Band-Aid on wound, because they were not, they don't have enough money either. You know what I mean? We've also put together one of the more comprehensive equipment plans I've ever seen, forecasting a ways out instead of coming to you in September and saying, we need seven hundred grand for a truck. When? Oh, October, no.
No, because it's at least a three-year production of getting us.
If you're lucky, not.
Exactly.
You can get a bucket, you can get a fire truck, right, Joe?
Still.
But we are not oblivious to the fact that it is becoming a burden on three different municipalities, and the wheels are turning slowly, but they're turning, so. The other problem is, we had four to five months' worth of meetings where that topic didn't have time to come up.
Correct.
So.
We had another issue.
We were handcuffed there a little bit, so that's half the year.
Right.
So, I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying, a lot of that increase, most of that increase, except the.
Well, hopefully your hands are free now, we can move forward and get this, like, give Marty the answer, what can we look for, a date or, or at least, at least something up there, so.
And I did put the preface in there that in order to get your township boards and your city council, like, having it on Monday is the paramount need. You'd be hard-pressed to get all five of us any other day of the week. So it's in the works, but we gotta pay, you know, this right now to get us through, so.
I'm happy, and that's a good answer, so I'm happy with the answer, as long as we're moving forward and we're trying to get it figured out.
Yeah.
I just don't, I just don't have a lot of time to elapse before.
And the municipal league has assigned us a legislative assistant to help us with the lobbying of that bill, because they see it as a need to, and, you know, she has answers to questions I didn't even know I had as questions, so. The league's been a huge help, and hopefully that'll get it at least kicked in the fans' wants, so.
And I'll make a motion to, unless we voted on it, it's been a while, so, but I'll make a motion to accept the increase in the Fire Authority extra payment of twenty thousand, one hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents.
I will support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And if any of you are interested, I'd be happy to forward you the list serve that we have from those efforts down.
Yeah, even if you were to send me the website link, maybe I'll respond to it also.
Yeah, and I can send you the Michigan.gov page for that house built, who I think it's forty-one, forty-four, just the number.
Make sure I got.
You can use Mike Burn's login if you have any comments about it. Okay. All right, let's talk about something happy, let's talk about parade, Mike.
Yeah, any requests for the Memorial Day Parade? Just like they normally do, they'll begin staging on Monday, May twenty-seventh at Fairgrounds. Parade will begin at ten AM, with the ceremony at Adwood Cemetery, shortly thereafter. They're requesting Main Street to be closed from ten AM to eleven from Hudson to Monroe. They will walk north from Monroe to the cemetery, as they do every year. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the closure of Main Street from Hudson to Monroe for the Memorial Day Parade, and I believe we're already getting a comment from that, so.
Good. Any questions on that? I'll make a motion that we approve the Main Street closure in hopes that it's not ninety-four degrees like.
Oh, Jim and I.
One here.
Yeah, it was terrible. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes, and I'm looking forward to walking on that new pace street too.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes. Okay. Boarding Commission report, Eric.
LARA has had a little bit of disappointing news. The easement agreement with the property owner, for various good reasons, didn't work out, and so.
The, which property? The Reagan property?
Yes.
Okay.
And so Mark Anderson said that this is exactly the same situation that they had with the township bridge, that they are, we, the LARA group, is going to have to go to Senator Albert to get help with Eagle and getting the current plans approved for Eagle. The raised boardwalk that Eagle first requested is way out of the budget, so hopefully they can make that approval. Arbor Board, there was no forum for us last week, and historic meeting is coming up.
Lara.
Yeah, so it was, from, from what our original permits and everything, Eagle changed some things, and that threw, it was, it was nothing on, to the Reagans, or it was Eagle that made some changes, and those changes weren't acceptable, and I am, and we all understand that, so we're having to try to convince Eagle to change their ways.
Upfield down. Jim.
Low light power meant, had some good conversation, Charlie showed us the event budget amendment and that part of it. There were three people that were celebrating their anniversaries. Ryan Weaver, not spent here eight years already. Emily was celebrating her third year, but unfortunately, the bad news is she's leaving, and we wish her the best of luck wherever she ends up. And Tom, depending on what date, will be celebrating his thirty-third year, because if it's nineteen ninety-one is correct, is when he started to have a light and power, so. And that's it, what I have.